The meeting of the March Mayor and Council to order. Thank you all for being here. If you'll all stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we have our invocation, and you can just have a seat for a minute, I want to take this moment to express my sincere sympathy to the Greer family, and also to the family of the bus driver. I don't, I'm sorry, I do not know her name. Our city has lost two precious souls now because of these flashing turn signals. So, my request to you is to be careful. Hopefully, we're going to get with DOT and see if there's something can be done. These flashing turn signals gives everybody a false security in making a turn with the yellow flashing light. And what it does is, you know, I mean, I'm sorry, I think most of us in here are probably from the old school. If you've got a yellow light, I mean, it turns, you've got a green light, it turns yellow, and then it turns red. And we all drive under that assumption, and that's not the case with these flashing yellow turn lights. So, but I do want to express our sympathy to the Greer family, and also to the elderly lady that lost her life back, was it November? I think November of this past year. So, we've lost two precious souls because of those turn lights. So, we don't need to lose any more. So, you know, if you have kids, you know, your friends, your neighbors, you know, tell them to pay close attention to those flashing lights, because the other person on the other lane actually has the right of way, because they have a green light when you have that yellow flashing light. But tonight, we have with us, and I was trying to figure out his rightful title.
You put revered on there. I thought I said revered, but I appreciate it.
We have Jeff Jackson with us tonight from St. Margaret's. So, if y'all all stand, we'll have our invocation. And he said I could call him Jeff, because that's what God calls him.
That's right, that's right. Let us pray. Almighty God, our Heavenly Father, send down upon those who hold office in the city, county, state, country, in spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice. With steadfast purpose, they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. We ask that you be with all, care for the people of this city on every level. Those who protect us, those who serve us, those who make decisions for us. Guide them and lead them, inspire them, fill them with your grace and spirit. Be with those in our community that are hungry, those who are poor, those who are in need, those who are marginalized, those who need you. Help us to always keep them in mind in all that we do. We may use our resources and our blessings to bless them. Lord, we come to you with heavy hearts as we have lost these lives. We pray for the repose of the souls of these people who have died. Mr. Greer, we pray for his family, his friends, all those who love him. And ask for your mercy to surround all of us in our grief. Be with us tonight. dwell with us, fill us with your spirit. All these things we pray, in God's name, amen.
Thank you, Jeff. St. Margaret's has an outreach program, and they do a lot of wonderful things in our community. And we appreciate the contribution that St. Margaret's Fiscal Church makes to our community. Okay, our citizens' comments. And I will tell you, we have a three-minute time allotment for your comment. So, if you've signed in, if you'd like to make a comment. Mr. Tiplit, will you get that list for us? Oh, okay, all right. Do we have anyone that would like to make a comment to the Mayor and Council? It's on, maybe I just need to pull it a little closer to me. Is that better? Okay. Okay, having no comments, that's, we'll move on to the next item. We have the minutes from our February 3rd meeting and our February 13th work session meeting. Y'all have had a chance to review those. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes?
I'd make a motion, they'd be approved.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? A motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same side, motion carries. Okay, we have our Mayor and Council announcement, comments. Dr. Monday, y'all have any comments you want to make?
I'd like to make a brief comment. An invitation was extended to me to attend the Citizens Police Academy, and I accepted. And it has been quite an experience, and I would recommend it for all Carrollton citizens. And one part especially has stood out is my time spent riding with Sergeant Paderas. And very impressed. We are in good hands in Carrollton, and lucky to have people such as he, and the night shift we were riding with that night. Thank you, Chief Joel. It was, it's been a good experience.
I'd just like to thank all of our city employees for the great work that they do, and give a shout out to all of the street maintenance people, and others that are dealing with this weather that we've been experiencing, and how they have, you know, gone above and beyond to keep our streets clean and work within the boundaries that they have to work with. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know how much I personally appreciate our city attorney in things that he does besides being the city attorney. He's also, as y'all probably know, a pastor, preaches at Victory Methodist Church, I believe it is, once a month. That's also a church that Tommy Greer, if he didn't start it, he was very, very instrumental in keeping it going. And I've been going out there for about a year now, and Chuck's been the head preacher out there for roughly a year now, I believe. Took over from Tommy Greer, and he delivered an outstanding message yesterday that I wish everybody could hear. But just very proud to call Chuck a friend, and before I get emotional, I'm going to hush, but we're, I'm very proud to have him as a leader in Carrollton.
Well, I'm just going to echo everything that's been said. We have a great police force, and they do an awesome job. And until you've witnessed some of the things they have to go through, you just, some people just don't believe they go on in our city, but they do. And Mike Green and his guys, I mean, they've done a great job. And this water, a friend of mine asked me this afternoon if I knew where she could go for wood. And I guess I looked at her kind of strangely, and I said, "Gopher wood?" She said, "Yeah, I need to start an ark." So, I guess I need to go back and read the, knowing the ark, to see that the ark was made out of gopher wood. But anyway, we have, we have great employees in our city, and they do an awesome job. I mean, you couldn't ask for a better group of people to have in our city working for us every day. City manager's announcements.
Again, I just echo most of what y'all have said. I do want to, I'm a numbers guy, and apologize for giving you boring facts, but we've had more than 20 inches of rain since the first of the year, and that's a lot of rain. And so, again, I appreciate all that everybody's doing, and it affects just about every department. So, again, to the public, please just bear with us. We're suffering through this as best we can. It's not as bad as 2009, though, when we had the, we actually had 100,000-year rainfall hit the Dog River Basin. So, our structures will hold, and our dams will hold. So, but it's been a lot of work on Mike and his crew. So, thank you for all that you do.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda items for consideration for our meeting tonight?
So moved.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, raise your right hand, please. Any opposed, same side, motion carries. I'm going to, if our audit is great, I'll take the credit. If it's not, it's because of the previous administration. So, I'll turn it over to Tim to introduce our auditors.
Chris Hollifield with Rushden Inn is here. They've been doing our audit about the last six years, does that sound right?
We just finished our fifth year.
Fifth year, okay. Well, I consider this our report card. I joke about how boring it can be, but this is exciting to me. And again, it is a report card on the city. I don't know of a city in better financial shape. You may tell me of one, but I'm going to be surprised. So, our reserves are very high, our debt coverage ratios are amazing. And so, we're very proud of the work we've done here. And every department head and every employee has a hand in that. So, with that said, Chris, go ahead and wow us with the charts and numbers.
I'm a numbers guy, too, by the way. So, Mayor and Council, I appreciate you having us back to do the audit this year. It's been, it's been a pleasure. We also have Julie George and Kelly Palmer from our, work out of our Carrollton office here. So, just, just so you know, we do have a physical location here, and we are a local firm here as well, so that's the service in your city account. I appreciate Jim Faith and everyone that else that contributed to getting us to this point where we are. This, this right here is the end result. This big, thick, blue bound report here that will give you plenty of reading at night, if you want to get into all the details there. I'm not going to bore you reading a bunch of numbers. So, I've put together a slide presentation that will take us through the highlights of the audit. And pull it up right here. There it goes. Okay, so on the, and apparently I'm pointing all over the place there. Okay, I try not to point anything to be in the face. So, as we go through the first slide here, we're talking about our opinion letter. And although there's a lot of information in the report, this, this letter here is really what you're looking for from your auditor. This is our opinion letter, where we talk about the city's responsibilities. We talk about the auditor's responsibilities. Even though we assist in preparing these financial statements for the city, these numbers are provided to us by City Finance, and we work with City Finance to make any adjustments necessary to get the numbers where they are. These numbers in this report is a responsibility of the city. Our responsibility is to give an opinion on these financials. So, a third-party reader can take comfort, and they've got this opinion letter in here that's been audited by a CPA firm, and they can rely on these numbers as they are accurately presented. We issued a good, clean opinion on the financial statements. As you look through the report, I'm sure that Finance, Jim reports to you probably on a monthly basis at least of looking at budget actual reports. You're probably familiar to looking at general fund, water fund, sanitation, those different type funds, and seeing how you compare to budget. As we, as we prepare this report here, and we issue the financial statements for year-end, we also put two additional reports in there that you don't necessarily see on a monthly basis. And that's where we combine all funds of the city. All activities are combined into a statement of net position, a statement of activities, similar to like a balance sheet and an income statement for the city. And that's where you can see full accrual, rather than budget basis, you can see all funds combined. And I'm just going to pull a few numbers out of there on the next slide as we go through, and we look at five years of data here. So, if you'll follow me here on the, on the bottom row there, 2019, as we look at the first three numbers, we've got net investment and capital assets. You think about all the infrastructure, buildings, land, vehicles, equipment that the city owns, less any accumulated depreciation that we have on those over the years, less any debt that we might owe on those assets. That gets down to our net investment and capital assets, okay? If you look at our restricted net position, those are funds that we have, assets that we have, that are restricted for some purpose. An example of that would be splash funds that those come in. Those are restricted by the voter referendum on what we can use those funds for. And then we have, what's left is unrestricted net position, 13,136,397. And the three of those numbers total up to the total net position of $195.3 million. So, if you think about the balance sheet, if you will, total assets, all the assets, everything that we own, including cash, but not just cash, less any liabilities, less any debt, what we owe others, gets to the net. Sort of like the net worth of the city, if you would, at $195.3 million. And then for the year, our revenues exceeded our expenses, all funds combined, $5,35,055. You can see that's up from 3.299 million the previous year. So, a little bit of increase there. As we flip to the next slide, we're going to talk about just the general fund. And as you see pages across the top there, those are the pages that are in the blue bound report, if you ever want to reference back to those. But our revenues in the general fund for the year, $23.8 million. And you can see what significant changes we had here in our total revenues. This is not all those, but most significant, all these are increased during the year. Most of our revenues were increased. Our property taxes increased, our motor vehicle tax, our local option sales tax was up 11.9%. And that's a significant jump. Our insurance premium tax was up. Our franchise tax increased 6.7%. Our cultural arts fees increased 31.7%, $85,000. And then our interest revenue significantly increased during the year in the general fund. Our total expenditures in the general fund were $24.9 million, okay? They decreased for the year, so that's a great. Our revenues had significant increases there, our expenditures were down. So, they decreased $1,596. The previous year, we had several capital programs going on, several capital purchases going on. For example, we had the, we had the fire department building that was destroyed, and we had to spend some money on that. So, that was one significant capital item we had in the previous year. And then we think about unassigned fund balance. So, when we talk about fund balance in the general fund, we're talking about our assets, less our liabilities equals our fund balance at the fund level there, $13.1 million. So, when you look at that compared to our annual expenditures of $24.9 million, that means we have 6.3 months of operations in our fund balance, okay? That's a great, healthy place to be. That general fund is in a good, is in a good financial shape there, especially when you think about, this is a picture as of last June, okay? Before our fall property taxes come out. We've already gone through our collection of property taxes from the previous year, spin into our budget in June. That's one of our lowest points that we could take a look at our fund balance, okay? So, the general fund in great shape there. As we look at some of the revenue sources on the next slide, Slide 6, it's just a good pie picture here of what all our revenue sources are. And it's good to see many sources of revenue here, not just 50% property taxes or anything like that. If you look at property taxes, 17% of our revenues in our general fund, okay? Our local option sales tax is 17%. Our insurance premium tax is 6%. Our charges for services, which would include recreation, would include the cultural arts, and some other charges for services, 18% of our total general fund budget. We have franchise taxes that make up about 10% of that. And then we transfer some funds from, from our other funds within the city, make up about 11% of the total revenues that come into the general fund. When we look at our expenditures on the next slide, Slide 7, this is how we basically spend the money in the general fund. And if you look at, the police department makes up about 30% of those expenditures. Fire makes up 21%. If you look at culture and recreation, makes up 26%, $6.5 million. Public Works makes up nine, and then our just general government makes up about 10%. And then housing and development make up 4% of our total expenditures in that fund. On the next slide, we're going to talk about water and sewage fund. Our revenues in this fund for the fiscal year 2019, $15.4 million. That increased $113,000, so pretty flat in revenues there, just up a little bit. Our expenditures, $12.1 million, they increased $267,000, 2.2%. And then our operating net income, the difference between those two, almost $3.3 million. That's, that's a great number to be looking at. And when you look at our debt coverage ratio, so we're required to maintain by our GFA debt, a debt coverage ratio of 1.05. Ours is 14.82, okay? So, what that means is, when we look at our operating net income of the three, almost $3.3 million, that's the amount of, amount of money, not just that, when we add back depreciation to that and non-cash item, that's the amount that we have to spend on our debt coverage, our annual payments that we make on our debt. So, we want to make sure that we're profitable enough, or have a net income enough in that fund to cover at least our payments. Well, we're 14.82. We don't see that high of a number very often with these water and sewage fund with our other clients. So, that's a great place to be, very financially secure in the water and sewage fund. On the next slide, we talk about the sanitation fund. Revenues in this fund, $4.7 million. They increased 368,000, up 8.4% in our revenues in this fund. Our expenditures and our transfers that we bring into this fund increased $458,000, up about 10.1%. And when we look at our unrestricted net position in this fund, $1.6 million, that's 3.9 months of our annual expenditures in this fund. So, good, another, another good, healthy place for this fund to be as well. Okay, so I mentioned one letter early on, our auditor's opinion letter. There's also two other letters in the report. These, these are both near the back of the report. Under government auditing standards, we're required to look at internal controls and compliance with laws, contracts, agreements, debt covenants, those type of things with the city. And so, we issued this separate letter in the report, and that's where you would find- any internal control or compliance, things to look at that we might have mentioned in the letter there. It's on pages one-eleven through one-twelve. On the next slide, we also look at, anytime you have federal dollars that you are expending that are seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in total, all federal funds combined, we must do an extra layer of what we refer to as a single audit, okay? Which means we must look at internal controls and compliance on just how we're handling our federal dollars that flow through. And so, there's also a letter in there where we've looked at internal control and compliance, and we had no issues to report to you on any of the federal funds that we looked at. And there's several, several different grants that flow in. So, when we look at what's coming down the pipe, I think it's always important for this body to realize that things don't just stay the same. Just like in your world may be with everything, everything's constantly changing. It's good to know what your finance department's dealing with on a everyday basis. GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board, is what issues the standards that we must follow in reporting these financial statements. All governments must follow those. So, they're constantly issuing new changes or new standards that we must follow. GASB eighty-eight had to do with the debt and what disclosures we have in the report. That was required to be implemented by the city with this fiscal year nineteen. That was implemented. It required some additional disclosures about our debt. What is, what's the collateral on those debt? What would happen if there was a default, different other disclosures? Didn't change any numbers, but that was implemented during the year. Also, a couple more that are very important coming down the line that GASB eighty-four has to do with fiduciary activities. And you think about, well, what the heck's a fiduciary activity? Well, anything that we are receiving in, that we're holding for others that must be paid out, you think about traffic citations, okay? We get a traffic fine, there's these add-on fees that are added to the fine that are dictated by the state of Georgia. We hold, we bring those funds in, that's not our money at that time. When it goes through court settled, then we must pay out those extra fees to different organizations. And then the city keeps the remaining fine amount, okay? So, there's going to be some changes on how that's reported in the financials in here. There'll be a couple more additional financial statements that have to be disclosed on that with our municipal court activity. And there could be some other activities we will work with Finance that's got to be implemented in fiscal year twenty. And then, a large change here, that's both on the private and public sector, has to do with leases. And the government sector is referred to as GASB eighty-seven. So, right now, we have two different types of leases that we might enter into as a government. We have one type of lease. A good example would be if we say lease some new police vehicles, okay? Our intention is, we're going to pay those, say, over a five-year term. We're going to own those vehicles at the end of the lease. And so, we go ahead and refer to that as a capital lease. We recognize and put the capital, those vehicles on the books as an asset, and we have a debt. We're basically just financing those, okay? We have other type of leases where we might lease space, we might lease copiers, we might lease other things, even equipment sometimes, that we have no intention to own at the end of the lease. We're basically just renting it. In the past, that was an operating type lease. That would just flow through your budget as a regular payment in your expenses, okay? Under this, and this will be implemented fiscal year two thousand twenty-one, all type leases now will be similar to like a capital lease. So, even those rental type leases now will be put on as an asset, will now have a right to use a new intangible type asset, a right-to-use asset, and we will have a liability for the debt on the books, as opposed to all the payments just flowing through expenses. So, that's a huge change. First step in that is getting a handle on all the leases that we may have and what's out there on the operating side that we might need to consider. The same thing works on the opposite side. If we are the lessor, where we're renting something to someone else, if we have some buildings that we're renting space to someone else, then we're now going to have not debt on our books, but we might have a receivable on the books for those future payments that might be multi-years down the road. So, it's going to be a big accounting change that we're going to work through Finance on and that all governments and even in the private sector with and the for-profits are having to deal with as well. That's the presentation. And answer any questions you might have. I know I went through that pretty quickly.
Very important to our citizens, and we will have this available if anybody wants to come by and look at it and to see how the city is financially. And I, again, want to thank you for coming tonight. And I want to especially thank Tim and all of our employees because this city is financially sound. They do a lot of things, and they are very conservative in what they do. And I just commend all of them. And I think what you've brought to us tonight just reaffirms what we already knew. But I'll just, I mean, you know, did you see anything that we should have concern about?
We have, as I mentioned, we've issued separate letter.
Yeah.
Jim has copies of those. I think they're planning on getting those out to you, so.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much. Does anybody else have any questions?
I'm going to make a comment about what Betty said. This was something that I ran on in my campaign, is that we have a well-run city, and that doesn't happen by accident. And what you've said tonight just reaffirms that. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you all very much. Y'all have a good night.
You too. Okay, our next item is the rezoning request at Canterbury Villa subdivision.
Okay, so, we have a rezoning request for Canterbury Villa subdivision. This may look familiar because the mayor and council did table this request in August of two thousand nineteen, per their request of the applicant. The request has not changed. It's still requesting rezoning from ER three and R twenty, which are state residential and single-family residential twenty thousand square foot lots to residential plan development to allow for more lots, more density. The request was reviewed by the Plan Commission. It had to go back through the Plan Commission because enough time had passed where it needed to be revisited. It was a very close vote. It was five to four with approval with eight conditions that you can see listed here. And the conditions range from stipulating zoning landscape requirements and also setback requirements, requiring two-car garages, site plan would be binding, homeowners association must occur prior to any certificate of occupancy issuance, also a landscape buffer at the southern portion of the development, which I'm about to show you a site plan and reference that. And in addition, the new one is upon completion of a new stormwater and hydrology study, any unnecessary detention ponds shall be cleaned up and removed.
Ellie, if you would put...
...the layout they're requesting. Originally, there were supposed to be sixty-seven lots. They did reduce it to fifty-seven lots. There are currently twenty-six homes already constructed at the entrance of the north part, port, parsh, excuse me, the north part of this property. And they have put in a proposed pocket park, greenbelt access in the southern area, as well as a pet walk area for amenities. They have stated that their price point for the homes would be approximately two hundred thousand, plus or minus twenty thousand. They are also stipulating that the minimum lot size for the development is five thousand square feet. And also, due to property owner feedback, the greenbelt connection that is on the west, southwestern portion of the site plan, which you can see here, property owners to the south requested that that be removed, and the applicant was in agreeance with that. The applicant had originally requested to allow for the front elevations to be less than forty percent in building frontage and garage square footage. City staff stated that we would prefer that request not be granted. The applicant has chosen a builder this time. Before, there was an issue that a builder had not been picked, and Liberty Communities is the builder that the applicant has chosen to go through. And they did provide us with some building plans tonight that the applicant will go through.
Okay, I have Mr. Rathie, is that correct? Okay. Okay, all right. Okay, at this time, I will allow for those speaking in favor, Mr. Basil.
Good evening. My name is David Basil. I live at two-one-two Cedar Street. And it is a pleasure to be in front of you. I know most, if not all, of you personally, and I'm sure you make a fantastic team. And I do want to say I'm proud of you, regardless of how this goes tonight. I think we've done a lot for the city, and I think you got a good team. So, let's drill down on this project. I'm here to assist in the presentation of a subdivision, it's Canterbury Villa subdivision. I'd like to introduce or show you who else is on this team here tonight. First of all, we have the owner, Mr. Paul Rathie, here. And we have our builders, Neil Wilco, Wil, what, is that it? Oh, I'm sorry, from Liberty Homes. And we have Mr. Mike Crawford from Georgia and West. So, if there are any, I just, my plan is just give a generalized presentation and then defer to them, they will be speaking. So, I wanted to go back a little bit and tell you about the history of this parcel. This began and was actually platted as part of a larger subdivision back in two thousand six. Now, following that final plat, the roads, everything was put in. So, what you have tonight is a very unique, it's not a blank piece of land, not vacant. It has actually got streets, they've got gutters on it. I don't think we have the sidewalks in, and it's got detention ponds. So, normally, when you look at a zone, zoning, of course, is a balance, a balance between the private owners and the public. And when we do look at that, what we begin to look at is what's surrounding it. And you can see to the east, because you've got the north arrow up there, that's the west. You've got some very high-density multifamily homes, ten units per acre, things of that. At the top, you've got the original zoning, the original subdivision of this Chaucer Lane that does not, did not have HOA, developed as is, is three point six units per acre, I believe. And to the south, you do have R twenty. So, you've got on three sides, and in the middle, you've got an institutional use of church. Now, you do have the Heirs Farm, that has traditionally been what the Heirs have done. They've done cows and other agricultural uses, and that's to the east. So, what I want to talk about next was, is a little bit of the water. There's been issues about water, of course, too much water. We talked about today, we had how many twenty inches of rain since the beginning of this calendar year. Well, we've got what the stormwater requires, and we will do a complete hydrology study, a new hydrology study for this to meet that. We have to do that to meet Mr. Holland's standards and everything. And my understanding is the stormwater is a zero-sum game. What is on the site stays on the site as if it was not developed. And then it can only leave the site in a way and in a speed that as if it was undeveloped there. And so, in essence, that we feel like the stormwater is going to be taken care of by the statutes that are in place. Now, the Heirs have, my understanding, as I went to the Planning Commission, have raised an issue about stormwater on their property. And if it does, if the hydrology study does show that some of those existing ponds need to be moved, closed, or rearranged, that's what the developer's going to do. So, I'd like to say is that we can do the best we can to meet the Heirs' expectation. Now, there's been some mention of some water on the south side, too. Now, my understanding of the south side water is that it could possibly be in an existing floodplain. So, the rain events and the drain, natural drainage towards South Wire Lake have been without any sort of, that's, I guess, what the existing situation is, my understanding. I'm not saying that somebody built a floodplain. My understanding is that some of that, some of that land is in a floodplain, and some of the experiences could be explained in that manner. I'm not a scientist, but, and I haven't studied that, but I do believe that there is an explanation to be made there. I want to talk about some of the off-site construction that we're willing to do. This is, while there is momentum or just, and by the way, we did meet with the neighbors numerous times, both from Chaucer and both from the Canterbury Lane side. And we did modify. So, you've got fifty-seven lots, you've got to reduce buffer on that, our efforts to comply with that. The, what we're willing to do, and if, we don't really have the map, but Chaucer Lane, which is, and again, this is a very unique piece of property, because the way you enter is through an existing subdivision that was built split-level, maybe some vinyl on it. It's not the same that will be displayed and built in this Better Homes Canterbury Villas. But what we're willing to do, if the city allows, because it's the city's property, is to put a four-foot sidewalk that on one side will absorb the cost of that, all the way up to, I believe that's Noonan Road there, so you can, so that's what we're willing to do. And there has been some issues that are raised about, normally, I think we're going to have, I think our builder can talk to that, is five-bedroom subdivisions. We're willing to limit those. It's actually easier for us to have three- and four-bedroom, but the product may exist where someone has a larger family, and they, and they want that large home. But those will be limited. We're not out to make any sort of a tenant development or anything here. In fact, I think that over time, with new quality-built improvements, Chaucer Lane will slowly, or the upper part of that will slowly become a little bit more attractive. There's, I'm not saying it's what people in that neighborhood don't care, or they don't try their best. There are cars that are parked on the, in the yards, there is less care. There's not an HOA, there'll be an HOA down here. And I think there will be a, some connectivity at some time. And then there may be some mechanisms in the HOA. There is a, there are pocket parks, other things that some, that may have a gate that is, got a code on it. And if someone from upper on the Chaucer Lane wants to access that, we probably have some sort of, hey, look, let's plant up the yard, do this and that, and a good, strong HOA. Let me see here. And we have given you some examples of our homes, and we just asked... And we have given you some examples of our homes, and we just asked that you support this. I think it can be a, um, is needed. Uh, this type of, the, this price point, this, this type home is needed in the city. And I believe that, um, given the opportunity, uh, the, um, the developer and it, it could work out well for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Basil.
A lot of it's been talked about already, but I was just gonna touch base on a few of the reductions from the original subdivision. I think it's worth pointing out that the original subdivision was fully constructed, and that was hard to point out, but again, that it was fully approved, platted, filed at the clerk of courts, you know, office. So it was a done subdivision, Mr. Paul purchased the subdivision. But from the original, you know, before the rezoning request, I pointed out on the back, on the southern end where Canterbury Villas, that there was a buffer added, the lots were reduced further north. You have a full hundred-foot buffer in the rear property line of the lots along Canterbury. The lane there drove, um, up to the back of the current, so not just a, a buffer between units, but literally from property line to property line of four hundred feet, you know, with a green belt in between. I guess in the ponds I readdressed, that they'll, we'll obviously, when we get to, we'll do a road control plan and a full study, you know, to bring those up to current standard, address any issues that are found. It may simply be a lack of maintenance for so many years, maybe issue a lot of that. The, um, and also added were the, the two parks areas, those were on the original plan for the subdivision, along with the, I know there's proposal to add some sidewalks as well, that's one of the conditions. Um, and I think significant is the lot reductions. They not only got, you know, we reduced it to fifty-seven from sixty-seven lots, but also increased the size, so the lots also got larger. So the, the area that's dedicated for lots stayed the same, so it just got larger for the most part, you know, when you compare it to the original plan. Beyond that, we're glad to answer any questions about it.
And it's, um, my understanding that the original subdivision was approved in two thousand and five, is that correct? So that was fifteen years ago, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, did this, this plan doesn't have sidewalks in the neighborhood, right?
Well, this is just, uh, not the full plan, only the actual construction plans we'll submit.
Right.
And we'll add that. It's not currently there now, but it will be added, I know is a condition of approval.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Neil Cobal, fourteen hundred Highway eighty-five connector. I brought a slideshow and, uh, just to show a couple of the homes that we'd like to build in there. Um, I build in the city of Villarica and develop over there. And I met, uh, Mr. Rathie buying some other property that he had, and, uh, he introduced me to this project, which I was interested in building in. And, uh, I'm with Liberty Communities, I'm the owner. And, uh, really just wanted to show you a couple of the houses that we are suggesting that we build in here. Of course, they'll be, uh, different based upon what the final outcome of the, of the petition for rezoning is. But, uh, also just like to answer any questions that you may have about us or my company or the product in general that we'd like to build in there. Um, they'll go from sixteen hundred square feet to twenty-three bedrooms, four bedrooms, and some five-bedroom homes in there. They'll all be two-car garages. Um, and, uh, this is a community that, um, they mentioned earlier, you know, is sitting there, and, uh, it needs to some, some, to get some life back into it. And, uh, we've been successful doing that in the city of Villarica, over there in a couple subdivisions that were in the back of a, some pre-existing homes. And, uh, when we went into the, that particular subdivision, just a little history of what we did there. It was overgrown, the roads were dilapidated, it just needed to be restarted. And so we went in there and did that, and, um, you know, created a community out of it. And it's the same thing we'd like to accomplish at this location. I don't know if you could scroll down through some of those slides. This is one of our four-bedroom homes, um, and, uh, you could, most of our homes are gonna have the open concept, floor concept that everybody is looking for, um, and it's gonna have, uh, islands in the kitchen, uh, along with, uh, this particular plan has a little sitting room along in the master bedroom that's upstairs in the second floor. Um, if you could just scroll down to the next one, please. We have several different versions of this. This is, this one is our five-bedroom home. And, uh, you can also see that it, this one, particular one has a bedroom and a bathroom down, uh, along with, uh, open kitchen into the, uh, eating area there in the middle and in the family room. If you don't mind scrolling to the next slide, please. Uh, this is a, that, that bottom picture is a, uh, the house that we're just looking at, our five-bedroom. That's a decorated model, um, that we use. Uh, and this is the same thing that we'd be proposing here. We'd like to have a, a model home in the community, um, that's, uh, decorated accordingly. And it's, in the picture you can see there, we use, uh, uh, fl- flush LED, uh, lights. We put a technology package in the, uh, in the house for people to use, the Ring doorbells, the cam- uh, uh, cameras, automatic garage door openers, ther- uh, thermostats that are programmable, connected to the Z-Wave, um, uh, hub as well. And all of that can be controlled from the, uh, folks that buy the house from their phone. So, um, it's, uh, they're technologically advanced homes. Now, if you don't mind scrolling down. There's just a few other, uh, slides in here. This is a, this is one of our narrower plans. Um, that's his, uh, that's a four-bedroom house as well. And, uh, again, you see the open family room with the kitchen island. Um, and there's several other, we, we have nine total plans that we'd like to offer in the community. Appreciate you allowing me to present that to you.
What is the price range for these houses?
So these houses will vary, but they'll go from in the one-eighties up to two-hundred. Uh, we'll have some problems starting in the, um, uh, with some appraisals. Uh, some of the houses in the neighborhood are running values in the one-twenty's to about the one-seventy's. Uh, but we'll start on the upper end of that and try to, you know, bump the price up as we go, as we can get appraisals.
So that's the median
Yes, ma'am.
Cost for the houses, okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Okay, now we have, uh, Mr. Rathie, did you want to make any comments?
My name is Seth Phil Rathie, and, uh, uh, we've been working with this project, uh, for a long time. We acquired this property about ten years back. And, uh, after meeting with the staff, uh, talking to the neighbors, we have made the changes that were needed and, uh, and other improvements that were mentioned earlier. Uh, we plan to exist into existing subdivision entrance that needs some work there. And quality new homes will enhance this community and Carrollton. Uh, any conditions that are added by or required by the city staff, we will take care of those. And, uh, we humbly ask your support for this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rathie. Okay, now we have speaking in opposition, uh, Mr. Ralph Ayers. Mr. Ayers' family is an adjoining property owner to this project.
Um, I'm Ralph Ayers, and my family and my brother's family, Roy Ayers, own sixty acres, uh, on Newton Road. This land has been in our family since the nineteen forties. And, uh, my brother Roy has cows on, uh, the property there that joins the Greenbelt. In nineteen forty-seven, our father and mother started a dairy farm on Newton Road. The Carrollton Greenbelt goes through our farm. This part of the Greenbelt is known as the Ayers Dairy Farm Trail. Roy has cows in the pasture that joins the Greenbelt. We worked with the city of Carrollton on easement to put the Greenbelt through our property. The Greenbelt is a great asset and addition for Carrollton. The Ayers family has always worked with the city of Carrollton. Our father Rudy Ayers gave an, gave an easement of a sewer line to come through our property in the nineteen seventies, when, uh, Mr. John Robinson was mayor. The sewer line runs from Canterbury Drive to Newton Road through our property. In the nineteen eighties, we gave the city an easement to run a large water line through our property. We are not against subdivisions. Our own property, we own property that joins a nice subdivision, Stonecrest. However, we have a problem with the Canterbury Villas subdivision that joins our property, on the Greenbelt. The Endless Loop Drive, and you can see it up there on the plat, shows twenty houses on twenty lots on approximately three acres of land. The detention ponds are not located properly. One is located, uh, north-south of the property, the other north of the property. And, uh, the, the twenty houses will be rooftop to rooftop with all the water runoff causing a drainage problem that will cause erosion on our property near the Greenbelt. This water will run into a lower area on our farm, not into the detention ponds. The company that installed the detention ponds years ago, I think it was probably fourteen years ago or more, is not, is no longer in business, and I can see why. Because the petition, the detention ponds were placed in the wrong place, not in the lower area where the water will run. I would, I believe the detention ponds were placed where they are to preserve more lots. You can see the, on the, uh, what, the, uh, boundary lines of the property, where they're located. I request all lots on the Endless Loop Drive be one-acre lots per house. And, uh, no water runs into the detention ponds now. And it just kind of runs into a low place on our, I want to, property, uh, where, uh, nineteen and twenty number lots are. And I have some photographs here I'd like to pass around of the detention ponds.
Right quick, Haley, could you point to, or, one of y'all point to nineteen and twenty, where you're saying the water runs now?
This is the detention pond he was referencing. He's saying that it runs right through here and down onto his property.
Nineteen twenty is, uh, the low area of that property. And, uh, I think all the water, after you put twenty houses on about three acres of land, it's going to, you know, be running off the rooftops down on our property, not in the detention pond. Like I said, Stonecrest is a nice subdivision, they have, uh, they have, uh, sidewalks, they have, uh, you know, nice lots, and they didn't try to cram a lot of houses into, you know, a small space. I think, you know, twenty, uh, twenty houses on three acres is just too many, is that location.
Thank you, Mr. Ayers. Okay. Mr. Powers? Did you want to address the? Okay, are you Ms. Riggins? No, okay. Oh, okay, alright, Ms. Martin.
Uh, my name is Rosanna Martin. I live at one twenty-four Canterbury Drive. Canterbury Drive is the subdivision at the south end of the property. Um, I'm here to represent the Canterbury Drive neighborhood, uh, with a petition against the Canterbury Villas development. Uh, dear Carrollton City Council members, as concerned neighbors of Canterbury Drive, we are opposed to the proposed development of Canterbury Villas up for committee hearing. We drafted this petition when the developers first came to us this summer. Though some things have changed, our neighborhood still feels strongly in opposition of this development. We were respectfully asked that no zoning change occur on this parcel. Our most compelling reasons include, one, insufficient road infrastructure. Chaucer Lane simply cannot handle the dramatic increase in traffic that will occur if the rezoning is permitted. Adding fifty-plus houses will add about one hundred cars to this neighborhood. This one entrance neighborhood cannot handle the increase in traffic safely. Number two, no concrete building plans. The developer has changed the price point on the houses and has no concrete plans, leaving the neighborhood with little confidence in what the development will turn out to be. Obviously, this point has changed with the developer finding a builder since we first wrote the petition. However, our neighborhood is still concerned about this. No one in our neighborhood received an invitation to the developer's last meeting, even though they claimed that they paid someone to tape the invitations to our doors. We hope that the city council does its due diligence in researching the developer and the builder. What is their track record for adding value to the communities where they have worked in the past? Number three, the neighborhood does not support this project. Fourteen households have signed a petition in opposition to this development. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Would you guys like to see this?
You can just give it to Ms. Beaver, and she'll get it to us. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak against the project? Okay, do y'all have any questions or any other discussion? Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir. Good, how are you?
My name is Jimmy Isaac. I stay at one thirty-six Chaucer Lane. And, uh, I like to speak against this for simple reason, this, this, this place is already crowded. You gotta make a choice there. You're bringing all these houses in, and you're not picking out a way to go out. Traffic is bad enough going from Chaucer Lane to Newton Road. Kids catch the bus there. And that church is there, that's a lot of traffic, and a lot of, and he's referring to people how we keep our neighborhood clean. It's clean, he lying when he says it. He's not being truthful. I got, when he started this thing, he came, he and, uh, 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 what they call that, one that, uh, do, uh, lawn maintenance, the, uh, code enforcement. He sent me a letter that says my grass was too high. That's a bunch of bull. I cut my yard every two weeks. The roads is in good condition now. The houses are in good condition. I understand that you need, we need more houses. But there is no way that fifty-seven, sixty houses can get back there and are not caused problems. Remember Bristol Lake?
Yes, sir.
The same thing gonna happen.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Liberty, do you have a comment?
Uh, um, I'd just like to comment that I appreciate Mr. Ayers showing up tonight. He's got a, a beautiful piece of property. I've enjoyed, uh, riding my bike through there and walking through that area. And, um, I, I fully understand your concerns, um, when it comes to things that would affect your property in the future. Uh, I also, uh, appreciate the people from, um, the neighbor, neighboring subdivision coming tonight and, uh, voicing their concerns. What, it really helps us as a city council to hear from, uh, neighborhood, neighboring properties when we're considering something like this, to, that you come to voice your concerns. It's, uh, very helpful on us to make a decision. And I appreciate the gentleman that just spoke concerning the traffic. Uh, that one particular thing is not something that I took into consideration, uh, this afternoon, uh, as I- as I rode through there and just kind of evaluated what was, what impact that newer development might have on the existing neighbors. And traffic, construction traffic is, I've been in the construction business for thirty-four years and trucks running up and down the road and the lots are small on the front end. And I'd be concerned if I had a small child in that area with construction traffic going up through there. So I appreciate everyone that has come tonight and expressed their concerns. And it really does help us when we're trying to make difficult decisions. Thank you.
Gentlemen, do you feel like you have enough information to make a decision concerning this request tonight? Do I have a motion concerning this rezoning request?
I'm gonna make a motion that we disapprove this rezoning request for Canterbury Villas from RE three and R twenty, ER three and R twenty to a residential plan development.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Any opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Grizzard, we have resolution oh four twenty twenty, construction-related noises.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I had contractors in the area point out to me that our noise ordinance did not allow them to work after six o'clock in the evening. And as anyone knows in the construction business, they need to be able to work the daylight hours, particularly during the summer. So what you have before you is resolution oh four twenty twenty, which changes that ordinance to allow them to work from dawn to dusk. And again, except on Sundays. On Sundays, they cannot start until after, the afternoon and work till six o'clock.
Oh, I'm sorry. Is, oh, you're welcome. Is our mics not working? Oh, okay, all right, okay. All right, you want to restate that?
I'll start over. Again, it was pointed out to me recently that our noise ordinance did not allow for construction after six P.M. It limited to seven A.M. to six P.M. on weekdays, so I won't go into all the details. What we've got before you is a proposal to change that from sunrise to sunset, that it would allow construction between sunrise and sunset, Monday through Saturday, and then from twelve P.M. to five P.M. on Sunday. And we really think that's reasonable. We think that's what's been going on in a lot of cases. It would not allow somebody to disturb people's sleep or set up lights or anything like that to do construction without a special permit, and that would be a rarity. I can tell you when there might be a special permit, like the replacement of, where Superior Products burned in the industrial park, they were allowed to work, you know, with lights and in the dark when need be. But we recommend this change. We think it's the right thing to do, particularly with the rainy season we've had. It's hard to get any kind of construction done. And it certainly would be difficult limiting, stopping that work at six o'clock. Thank you.
Yeah, it's my understanding that this is pertaining to construction noise, such as running a tractor or, you know, I wouldn't want to limit a construction firm from being able to paint or put floor covering down at eight o'clock at night if it was in the middle of the winter and it got dark at five o'clock. And, you know, if they're trying to meet a deadline. I want to just clear up that, you know, for the media and everyone concerned, that we're really talking about noise not necessarily working hours. Is that correct?
That was the intent. I'm gonna defer to our attorney. Do you think this is clear enough with what Mr. LeBitter's pointing at?
Yeah, I do, because it's part of a larger provision in the code, which prohibits loud, disturbing, and unnecessary noises. So if you're not making a loud, disturbing, unnecessary noise, you wouldn't be in violation of the code. So that's really the prohibition. And then we further define sort of some default rules as to what that would be. So, yeah, that would be okay.
I just wanted to make sure that didn't get misconstrued as limiting the number of hours.
Yeah, I think if you were inside a building putting tile down or carpet or something like that and there was no noise, you know, coming to the outside of the building, it would be fine.
I just wanted to make sure everybody in the room understood what we were doing. Thank you.
Do I have a motion for the adoption of this resolution?
I'll make a motion we adopt the resolution as presented.
Is there a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, we have resolution oh five twenty, right-of-way abandonment on Barnes Drive.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There is an approved development that will go in on Barnes Drive. And again, it was approved last year. As they started to go through their construction project, they discovered that there was a platted road on paper. You can see that before you. I'll try to point with this pointer. It was never built. It's an extension of Barnes Drive. The city does not need it, city does not want it. We did not know it was platted. We run into these things from time to time. And to clean up the record and allow them to build in that area, we are asking that you abandon your possession of that right-of-way back to the property owner.
Do I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve resolution oh five twenty twenty.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by the raising of a right hand. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, resolution will pass. We have resolution oh six twenty twenty.
Let me clarify something on that last. I said it was on Barnes Drive. It was an extension of Barnes Drive. It was on Cedar and Burns is the actual location.
Okay. Okay, we have resolution oh six twenty twenty, adoption of the IPM code.
Good evening. At your February work session, we discussed our review of the blighted housing program that we currently have in place. And as part of an effort to streamline the procedures for that program and to do a better job, I feel like, of administering the blighted housing program, we recommended at that time that you adopt the International Property Maintenance Code. This is kind of part of the family of building codes. That's one of the permissive codes that DCA routinely adopts. And we are asking at this time that you adopt the International Property Maintenance Code to be a complement to our efforts at eliminating blighted housing in Carrollton. Do you have any questions? I'm available.
I sincerely appreciate your work on this, Erica. I know, I think all of us ran on the platform of beautification and trying to clean up some of our areas and revitalizing them. And I think this is our first step in being able to do this. So do I have a motion for the adoption of this, of resolution oh six twenty twenty?
Madam Mayor, I'd be happy to make, we recommend, uh, resolution oh six twenty twenty.
Okay, is there a second? I have a motion as second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, resolution passes. We have resolution oh seven twenty twenty, animal control. I think we're going to defer to our city attorney on this.
Thank you, Mayor Casey. We have, obviously, an animal control ordinance in the city, but by agreement with Carroll County, they enforce our animal control ordinance. The city of Villa Rica also is a party to that agreement. From time to time, the county makes changes to their animal control ordinance, and they request that we make similar changes so that the ordinances are substantially similar with each other. And this resolution would amend our current animal control ordinance to reflect some changes that the county adopted back in January. The highlights are basically an additional or definition of adequate shelter that is added to the ordinance, and then a requirement that animals within the county, and if you adopt this within the city, are provided adequate shelter as defined by the ordinance. The other big-ticket item is the added definition of tether or tethering and some requirements as it relates to how animals can be tethered. And the rest of the ordinance relates to a few items of what I would call housekeeping, and then the definition of community cat and allowing community cats that meet the requirements of the ordinance to exist within the city. They have to be spayed and neutered and tagged and whatnot. Any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
We were all given this, and I want to thank Chuck for highlighting the changes for us because I know it's very important and it's very interesting reading, but I appreciate his effort to read it for us and to give us the highlights of it. Is there any discussion questions regarding the changes?
Can I ask a quick question of our city attorney?
Absolutely.
Under restraint on section fourteen fifty-three, animal control, C two, do I understand that cats are supposed to be on a leash?
They're not supposed to be on a leash, but they are supposed to be restrained in a way that doesn't allow them to roam freely.
And this applies to community cats?
It would not, it would not apply to community cats.
Yeah, I just ask because recently I've had a couple of concern. People ask me about cats roaming the neighborhoods, killing birds, and as a catcher, some of my best friends. But I understand other people's concerns about this.
Essentially, the, any animal within the city is supposed to be restrained in a way that prevents it from leaving the property. Or if you leave the property with the animal, that you have them on a leash or something that keeps them from roaming freely. I mean, that's the, sort of, the upside of what this is intended to do.
I know there's areas of our town that have had quite a problem with feral cats. I don't know, in the past, has that been animal control, attended to that?
As far as I know. I mean, that's sort of there, you know, again, we have an agreement with Carroll County, and they're the ones that are, their animal control officers are supposed to police that within the city. Now, that's not to say that it's to the exclusion of our officers. I mean, our police officers could, in theory, respond to a situation and cite someone for violating our ordinance too. So we have dual enforcement authority, but I think it's just from an equipment and training and all standpoint, it's better to have the animal control folks do it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And do we have a motion to adopt resolution oh seven twenty twenty, animal control? Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Have a motion and second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carries. Okay, we have Dodge truck trade-in. Mr. Grizzard, you want to respond or Tony?
Tony Richardson's gonna present the detail of this. This is something we presented to y'all in the work session. First, let me explain why Tony presents vehicle purchases. Years ago, we found that we would have two or three different department heads calling the same car vendor and confusing them on who they were giving pricing to and maybe pricing. We've actually had, and again, this is a long time ago and before I was city manager, we've actually had vendors give different prices for the same truck to different people within the city. So Tony handles all of the vehicle bids for us, unless they are a specialty like a trash truck, which Mike would do, or a fire truck, which Jimmy would do. But that's why you're seeing Tony up here to present this, is just to make it uniform. And he's got a lot of background with automobiles and their repair and maintenance. And with that said, we presented to you at the work session, and we had two one-ton Dodge trucks that just had a litany of problems. They're in the shop more than they're out. And we've tried to make it work, and we've tried to give the local Dodge dealer a chance to fix these. And we're at the point, we gotta have, you know, these employees have gotta have a vehicle to do their job. So with that said, I asked Tony to go forward and approach some folks on the trade-in, and he's gotten us an excellent trade-in value, and I'm gonna let him give that detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony.
As I said, some of this information was already presented to you at the work session. What we did is look at these vehicles and the specifications for each one of them. They're not exactly identical. They're both twenty-seventeen Ram vehicles. One of them's a standard cab, the other is a crew cab, but both of them are four-wheel drive, dual rear wheel and service bodies. When the statewide contract of vehicles with the same specifications as these, the current statewide contract holder has weighed Ford, and the price there for a crew cab with the same specifications as ours is fifty-one thousand seven hundred forty-three dollars. We went ahead locally with our local Ford dealer and got a price from them, and they came back with fifty thousand two hundred seventy dollars, or fourteen hundred and seventy-three dollars less than the statewide contract price. So then we viewed the other truck, which is a standard cab, four-wheel drive, service body, dual rear wheel. The price on the state bid list from Wade Ford is forty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty dollars. Cost locally from Pugmire was forty-eight thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars, or a hundred and twenty-eight dollars less than the state contract price. So then we took both of our Ram trucks over to Pugmire for consideration as trade-in vehicles. And they did look at both of them and gave us some values. If we traded in the crew cab on a new Ford, they would allow us twenty-four... With the trade, they would, the new Ford would cost us twenty-four thousand seven hundred and seventy dollars. The standard cab with the trade would cost us twenty-five thousand eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. The crew cab only has thirty-five thousand seven hundred and ninety-two, or about that, miles. And the standard cab has thirty-one thousand nine hundred and twenty-three miles. When purchased new, the Ram trucks were low bid among our local dealers. Crew cab was delivered on April fourteenth, two thousand seventeen, at a price of thirty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. The standard cab was delivered on July the twenty-sixth, two thousand seventeen, at a price of thirty-three thousand six hundred and ninety-five dollars. Allowed trade value for the crew cab, thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars, and for the standard cab, twenty-eight thousand five hundred dollars. The city staff respectfully requests if you consider allowing the trade of these vehicles, while we have the opportunity to recover most of the money that we paid for them when they were new. And you should note that if you do vote to approve it, we'll also approve budget amendments for the respective departments, which I believe those are attached as well.
Anybody have any questions?
I'd like to commend you on your trading abilities and shopping abilities there. And could I get some hints next time I'm buying a new car? Good job.
Well, I think this is just another example of the great employees that we have here in the city and how they look out for our well-being. Okay, gentlemen, you've had a request for the trade-in and the purchase of the new trucks. Do I have a motion to grant this request?
I'd make a motion we grant the request.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, motion carried. Well, I appreciate, again, the great job... Well, I appreciate, again, um, the great job, uh, Mr. Triplet and the review of, um, the audit was very favorable and I appreciate the job that everybody does in, in maintaining this status for our city. Any other comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry.
Recognize someone, um, Tyler Paul Smith in the back. Have you qualified?
I'm qualified this morning.
This morning? Okay, so I, I can officially say, uh, he is, he is qualified to run for District Eighteen, uh, State, uh, as a State Rep, Kevin Cook's district. So this is not endorsement by any means pressed, but, uh, uh, best of luck to you, so. Yes, sir.
Okay.
How about that accent? Sounds like me back there.
Alright, do we have a motion to adjourn? Have a second? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Any opposed, same sign. Okay.